Am I prepared to give the President a signal?
Just give him a signal when you're ready.
Okay, Mr. President, we are ready.
Okay, this meeting of the Essex County Board of Chosen Freeholders is hereby called the Order. Due to the COVID-19 outbreak and to be in compliance with the Governor's Executive Order, this meeting is being conducted remotely. The public is able to view this meeting via a livestream on YouTube. A link for the livestream is posted on our website at www.ECFNJ.com. To all participating in the meeting, please be mindful to put your microphone on mute until speaking. Additionally, please identify yourself by putting your name on the record each time before you speak. The general public will be able to participate by means of communication equipment. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Cooper. Absent. Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano.
Here.
Commissioner Mercado.
Here.
Commissioner Pumares.
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner Siebel.
Here.
Commissioner President Gill.
Here.
Okay, we're going to emit the salute from the flag since we're conducting this meeting remotely. However, we'd like to call for a moment of silence, particularly for those who have been affected and that we have lost due to the COVID-19 virus. The number for our county, the County of Essex, is 1,902 lost souls as of today. So we ask that we take a moment of silence for all that we have lost, but particularly for those 1,900 families. It's almost unbelievable that the number is that high in the last six months due to this pandemic. Thank you. I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Madam Clerk, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Mr. President, there are none.
Okay. Madam Clerk, I want to move the agenda slightly out of order and go to immediately to Resolution Number 34. We have a special guest and former Freeholder President and now Assemblywoman from the 34th District, Assemblywoman Brittany Timberlake, who's joining us. I want to thank her for making a few minutes to join us and to be conscious of her time. And we've asked for her to join us to speak on Resolution 34, which is a support resolution of Assembly Bill A4034, the People's Bill, which the Assemblywoman has been a huge proponent of and wanted to turn the floor over at this time to talk a little bit about the bill. And then, and hopefully, we can move on our support resolution for what I believe is a great piece of legislation. Assemblywoman Timberlake.
Thank you so much, Freeholder President Gill. Thank you to all of the freeholders. It's really an honor to be back. Hello to Michael Palavecchio and Francis McInerney, who are there in support. And I see Robert Jackson as well. So it's good to see the whole gang again. And thank you again, Freeholder President, for putting together a resolution in support of the bill. The bill number is A4034. It has been called the People's Bill. The name "People's Bill" actually came about because there's about 150 organizations, spanning from housing organizations all the way down to teachers' associations, who are in support of this piece of legislation. The core four advocates in support are the Housing and Community Development Network of New Jersey, Fair Share Housing, Ironbound Community Corporation, and New Jersey Citizen Action. What this very important piece of legislation does is it makes sure that those who have been economically impacted due to COVID in a negative way will be able to keep a roof over their head, whether or not they're a homeowner or a renter. The bill creates a uniformed mortgage forbearance for homeowners. The governor has done a phenomenal job, as has the Lieutenant Governor, of being a leader during unprecedented times. And I don't know about you, but I'm going to be glad to get back to precedents in times because we're always talking about these unprecedented times that we're in. But truly, our governor has led us through a lot and has made very tough decisions. And he's done some amazing work around housing. He has a handshake deal with over 40 lenders requiring them to offer mortgage forbearance. What our bill does is not only does it codify the handshake deal, but it extends far past to even more lenders and it outlines what a fair mortgage forbearance is. Some of the lenders are doing phenomenal work and they're really, truly working to keep people in their homes, offering fair mortgage forbearance. While others are demanding 100% payment of that in which was put on forbearance for 90-day forbearance, they're demanding payment in full on the 91st day. Now, that's not fair terms. And that is going to launch us into a deeper housing crisis, which, as you know, we've never made our way outside of. One of the first ordinances that we were able to work on as a Freeholder Board was to combat the issue of foreclosure. And it created banking legislation. And thank you, Michael Palavecchio, for your work on that because Essex County is one of the leaders in the state in foreclosures. And New Jersey is actually the leader in the country in foreclosures. And it is our urban areas that are leading the state in those numbers. So that's a lot of bleeding of wealth outside of communities, especially those communities that have already been disenfranchised and have had issues building wealth for generations. So this bill makes it so that we can prevent another housing crisis and the loss of homeownership through foreclosure. The forbearance is also for the landlords who need to have a mortgage forbearance so that they can offer a relief to their renters. Speaking of renters and landlords, the bill has made sure that there is a rent repayment plan that is put into place. The governor and also there was a bill that I was happy to be proud of, I'm very proud to be a part of, where during the public health emergency and the state of emergency in which we're currently in, no one can be evicted. And shout out to Sheriff Armando Fontura, who I know also was one of the first counties who did that, stopped evictions during COVID-19. No one can be evicted during this time, and the banks are not allowed to foreclose. But what we're talking about is what happens after the state of emergency is lifted. What happens to that family who, you know, they can't pay their mortgage or they can't pay their rent and they're trying to play catch-up? Well, there are already over 20,000 pre-evictions already filed for non-payment that have been filed throughout our state. If something is not done about that, what we're going to see is a tsunami of evictions. And we're going to see a tsunami wave causing homelessness, a mass amount of homelessness. This is serious business. You're going to be driving down the street, you'll look out the window, you'll see someone that you actually know or used to maybe even share a cubicle with, who will be homeless if this bill is not passed and this issue is not taken up. I want to commend the county also because I saw the rental relief that they're providing. And also, I see the city of East Orange and Newark, they're doing excellent things. And they're providing rental relief. And the state of New Jersey also does have a fund too. Unfortunately, it's only for those who make 80% and below the area median income. COVID-19 has impacted so many people, even above the 80% area median income. It has impacted people who were previously considered to be self-sufficient, had never stood on food lines, you all know better than I. The food lines, every time you go all around to these different municipalities to hand food out, the food is going in, what is it, maybe an hour or maybe two? And there's people being turned away. So that lets you know that people are having a hard time feeding their families. Imagine the time, the hard time that they're having keeping a roof over their head. The need is great and the need is there. And these are people who were previously, again, self-sufficient and never knew what it meant to even need to tap into public assistance. So the repainted plan would be established first between the landlord and the renter. And if an affordable repayment plan agreement cannot be come up with, then that is whenever the bill defaults to what an affordable repayment plan is. I want to shout out Speaker Craig Coughlin, who, like the governor on this bill, has showed excellent leadership. The governor has called two times in very public settings for this bill to be passed and make it to his desk. And that was at his budget readdress. And also, when he was signing the environmental justice bill, he called for it again. Because housing is public health. And Speaker Craig Coughlin boldly did his part and stood with people over profit and made sure that this bill would make it to the floor. And it did pass the Assembly with about 48 votes. Currently, the bill is sitting in the Senate, and it seems to be getting tied up there. You all know that I do not mince words. The biggest adversary against the bill is the Apartment Association. They have been lobbying extremely hard because they'd like to reserve the right to continue to evict. And as soon as the state of emergency is lifted. And they also charge exorbitant amount of late fees and use that also as reasoning. We know also whenever eviction proceedings occur, what you're talking about now is having people who are down to their last dime, if they even have a dime at all, now having to go before court. And unfortunately, the way in which our system is set up, it's very difficult to represent yourself in court, especially when the landlord is more likely to have a representative there to do their side of the argument. I could go on and on and talk about this bill, Freeholder President Gill. It is one of the most important pieces of legislation that I believe that I have ever worked on. I do see it as an issue for all people of all colors. I'm getting calls from farmers who are saying, "Please, my mortgage company is not giving me a fair mortgage forbearance, and I have my business tied to my home as collateral. I'll lose everything in a foreclosure." That's people from South Jersey. I'm getting calls from single moms who are saying, "I don't know what else to do." From fathers who have always been providers, who are saying, "I don't know how to tell my family that they're going to be out on the street if these state of emergencies are lifted." We're talking about our residents, we're talking about our people, and we're talking about unprecedented times. And that calls for bold legislation, and that is what this is. And I'm just urging the Senate to put the People's Bill up in its current form. We've negotiated with the Apartment Association. We've given them over 75% of their ask within reason. But we absolutely refuse to gut the protections that they want to gut around the renters. And I will tell you that all the hoopla and controversy unfortunately has not been about the protection that we put in for homeowners. It hasn't been about the protection that we put in for landlords. Unfortunately, and I do believe it's disgraceful, all of the hoopla and controversy has been about the protections we put in for our renters, who more times than not represent also our most vulnerable population. And it's time for the state of New Jersey to get this done. And thank you for your bold leadership, Freeholder President Brendan Gill, in listing this as a resolution in support.
Thank you, thank you, Assemblywoman. It's great to have you back with us, for sure. And yeah, I mean, I think that you summed it up very, very well. So hopefully, this resolution will be heard by our leadership in the Senate, that it's time to move this bill and get this bill to the Governor's desk. Freeholders, do you have any questions or comments?
Freeholder President.
Vice President.
Assemblywoman, good to see you. This is
You too.
a magnificent piece of legislation. I wholeheartedly support this, and hopefully, we can do the acclamation. I certainly want to add my name to, in support of this piece of legislation. And you've done quite a bit of legislating when you were here, things that we're still using and trying to make better. And you're doing an outstanding job down there in the Assembly. But I agree with you, this is probably the most important piece that you've done to me. And I'm sure you're going to do a lot more great things. Happy to support it.
Thank you so much, Freeholder Vice President.
Mr. President, can I join in? Assemblywoman Timberlake, I've been following this piece of legislation since you first began working on it. And you've been working on this for a long time, and it's about time it's passed. And it's about time that it's passed and the governor signs it. And I want to thank you for all the work you're doing on this because it really matters, it really counts. And I'd like to see this resolution done by acclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder Siebel. Great to see you.
Same here.
Mr. President. Thank you, Assemblywoman. Great to see you. Our time on the Freeholder Board was too short.
Yes, hi, hi, hi. Freeholder Carlos Pumares, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. Our areas overlap quite a bit in our representation. And certainly, this bill speaks for itself, and it's definitely warranted. And I agree with the Vice President that we should do this by acclamation. If not, please sign me on to this. I want to thank you on behalf of our constituents for this very important work. It's critically important. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. President. Assemblywoman, besides this report resolution, is there anything else that we as individuals or freeholders can do to assist in pushing this legislation forward? Is there anything else we can do?
Yes, and thank you so much for that question. I believe that everyone who is within earshot of this message, you can always pick up the phone and respectfully, and I emphasize respectfully, request that leadership in the Senate let this bill see the light of day in its current form. We've had two other proposals to completely change the bill. The first one would have hurt landlords, and the second one would have hurt renters. The People's Bill is a balanced bill. It's fair to landlords, renters, homeowners, and banks. Okay, and if something is changed in the bill, it's going to skew it one way or the other and no longer be fair. So respectfully, just reach out to maybe some of your senators and also the Senate leadership and just say, you know, "We really do want to see the People's Bill pass." And I'll tell you this too, you know, I told you this bill helps everyone. We've had people far and wide of all different ethnicities, of all different economic backgrounds because COVID-19 decimated the entire economy, okay? But I will tell you this too, as I see so many people marching for Black Lives Matter, black and brown people make up a large percentage of the rental population. Now, I could go on and on again about that. It's in part due to housing discrimination that's been in for years and, you know, the redlining that occurs and the discrimination upon lending practices and things. And again, that's why we did the banking ordinance, right? But the bottom line is, is if we care about Black Lives Matter and those who are marching and protesting, our black lives are so much more than criminal justice. It's also about economic justice. And if this is something that is not done, what it will do is it will decimate the economy of black and brown families, knocking this back generations. And I say this, and it's a bold statement, but I stand behind it. What we could be seeing, that we're on the precipice of, is it will be as detrimental, if not more, than the burning of the black Wall Street by holding this bill up and not passing it. So it's so incredibly important to everyone's household and everyone's economy from all over. But I do know that so many are also marching for black lives. And if we really care, we have to put our money where our mouth does stand with people over profit and do what's fair and what's right.
Freeholders, additional questions or comments? Okay, hearing or seeing none. I will move the resolution. I have a second from Freeholder Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
I had asked that it be by acclamation from all of us.
I have no issue with that.
Okay, I will take roll call, Mr. President.
So again, moved by me and second by Freeholder Graham.
Freeholder President Gill.
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson.
Yes.
Freeholder Cooper, absent. Freeholder Graham.
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson.
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano.
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado.
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares.
Yes.
Freeholder Siebel. Yes. So moved.
Thank you, everyone, and have a good meeting. Thank you so much. Bye now.
Bye. Madam Clerk, are there any topics of discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. We have two topics of discussion today. First, a ballot demonstration from the county clerk, Chris Durkin. He will show step by step how to accurately fill out the ballot and to make sure that there's some clarity on the process for a successful voting experience. The second presentation is on the Essex West Hudson Greenway Project. Mr. President, we will start with our clerk, Chris Durkin.
Good afternoon, Chris Durkin, Essex County Clerk. Through you, Mr. President. We are undergoing a very important election. Election Day is November 3rd. By executive order and now by law, we are to mail out ballots, vote-by-mail ballots, to every registered voter. The first mailing was to 521,000 voters. Since then, we have mailed another 25,000 for 545,000 Essex County registered voters. Each voter has received a vote-by-mail ballot with this red band going across the bottom, thick red band, official ballot enclosed. When you pull out the contents of the ballot, you will have five pieces in the inner portion. So you have the return envelope, where you're going to return the contents, your ballot and the certificate envelope. You have your ballot, your voter ballot, which I'll go over in a minute. You'll have your certificate envelope that your ballot goes inside of. And that you will print your name, your address, and place your signature on the certificate envelope. And then, we have a postcard that lists the secure ballot drop boxes. We have 24 secure ballot drop boxes that have 24-hour video surveillance, picked up on a daily basis by the Board of Elections to be brought back and counted. We also have quick tips for voting, and insert quick tips for voting, and also the three-state ballot questions. Okay, so the first step, people want to vote their ballot. You want to use black pen or blue pen? You can use a pencil. I don't usually like saying that because in some other counties, they don't want you to use a pencil. But Essex, we have the high-speed optical scan readers, which read black pen, blue pen, and pencil. I prefer black pen. But you need to fill in the oval of your choice, within the box of your choice. Fill in the oval completely. You don't want to overvote. The header provides the office being sought, the term of office being sought, and the number of votes you are allowed. You don't want to make more votes than you are allowed to vote for because that office will be nullified, that vote. The other offices, if you vote correctly, will be counted. But it's important to fill in the oval completely, to not overvote the ballot. And you want to vote both sides of the ballot. Right, so the front side has the partisan races. The backside of the ballot has school board races. And if your municipality has nonpartisan council races. And there are three state ballot questions. So you want to vote the front and the back of the ballot. When you finish voting the ballot, you want to place it. So this is what's interesting, is you want to vote, what you want to do is you want to vote the ballot first, and then you want to place the ballot inside the certificate envelope. Then, after you place the ballot inside the certificate envelope, you'd like to seal the certificate envelope. Then you want to place, print your name, your address, and your signature. The reason why you want to do that after you place your ballot in the certificate envelope is because 6% of the voters do not include their ballot in the certificate envelope on the way back. So they vote their ballot and they keep it on the table or put it somewhere else, and they do not include it in the return certificate envelope. So you want to do that. Also, below that is if you have someone helping with the ballot, they're the assister, which goes underneath your signature, that information. Then you want to include, you want to place this certificate envelope that contains your ballot inside the return envelope. There'll be a barcode showing on the return envelope. The return envelope is going back to the Board of Elections to be counted. They scan in the barcode that shows in the window. That barcode contains your information. It contains your name, your address, your voter ID. That then gets uploaded into the statewide voter registration system that then will tell us that your ballot has been returned, the date and the time it was received. So that's what's important. That's why you need to include that barcode in the window. If you do not include the barcode in the window, that's fine. The Board of Elections will then just open up your ballot, pull out your certificate envelope, and scan in your barcode. So that's not fatal. What's fatal is if you don't include your ballot. But there's also a new law. The governor, in a deal, a compromise, and then the legislature came through with a law that says that voters can cure their ballot for two reasons. If their signature does not compare to their registered signature on file, or if they omitted their signature, if they did not include their signature on the certificate envelope. They then will be mailed a letter within 24 hours of that denial, telling them that they have until November 21st to cure their signature and have their ballot counted. As an example, 1,200 ballots were not counted in the primary based on signature comparison. 521 voters cured their signature, had their ballots counted. That did not include omitting your signature, which has now been included by the governor and the legislature, that if you do not include your signature, you can now update your signature to have your ballot counted. I know that there's five ways to get your ballot back. You can utilize United States Postal Service, there's prepaid postage, no stamp needed to the credit of the Essex County Freeholder Board. We haven't included a need for a stamp for more than 10 years now. This is now by law for every county for this year's elections. Then you can utilize the secure ballot drop box. You can utilize any secure ballot drop box in the county. You can bring your ballot back in person to the Board of Elections. You can have a bearer or carrier of your ballot bring your ballot back for you to the Board of Elections or to a post office or to the secure ballot drop box. But a carrier or bearer of your ballot can only carry three ballots besides their own. Or you can bring your ballot back on Election Day to your polling place, and you will sign a sign-in sheet, a ledger, signing in and then placing your ballot back in a secure ballot drop box to be counted the next day. You can vote on a provisional paper ballot on Election Day. It's very important to let people know that they will not be able to vote on a voting machine on Election Day. It is a paper election, a primary paper election, where you can vote on a vote-by-mail ballot or you can vote on a provisional paper ballot at the polling places. If you are a disabled voter, you can utilize the audio component of the optical scan machine. If you are a disabled voter, you can utilize the audio component of the optical scan machine, but there is no full-face ballot, no electronic voting machine to vote on. It's very important to know. Just also an update on, you know, the situation we had with the United States Postal Service for West Orange ballots. There were 99, that West Orange ballots uncovered on Friday in North Arlington. Those ballots were retrieved, they were then delivered to the 99 voters on Saturday. There's been an arrest made of a postal employee. And the post office is being cooperative with the county clerk's office, with the Attorney General's office. And, you know, we feel that the post office is on top of the situation and making sure that this doesn't happen in the future, with any future ballots. So thank you for your time and this opportunity, and I'm here for any questions.
Freeholders, any questions? Okay, great. Thank you, Chris. Thank you for your time. As we continue to use all of our possible platforms to continue to help educate the public on how they can participate in this year's election. Just one other quick question that I know that I've received from many constituents. The drop boxes themselves, how often are ballots picked up from the drop boxes that are strategically placed throughout the county?
A great question, and it is every day. And that's actually now by order of the Attorney General's Office that they must be, the contents must be picked up every day, and an insert, an empty insert must be placed in the secure ballot drop box. I will say some ballot drop boxes have been picked up twice a day just to make sure that it's not being filled up too quickly. But we are mandated to pick up ballots every day from all 24 secure ballot drop boxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I add something, President?
Sure.
First of all, Chris Durkin is doing so much work and doing such hard work in an unprecedented time, and from the numbers coming in, we are surpassing the primary vote, and we are going to have a very, very large turnout in Essex County. And part of that is because of all the work that Chris Durkin is doing. And I know that the drop boxes are picked up every day, and I'm pleased that a sheriff's officer is accompanying them because I've had people call me to tell me they were there when the drop box was emptied. And I know you're going around to all 24 boxes all day, every day, and you are really doing such a great job. And thank you for all the help I get when I call you. Thanks, Chris, for all your work.
Thank you, Freeholder Siebel. And I want to thank the Freeholder Board for your support, for your leadership. You know, it is never more needed than it is today in this pandemic and in 2020 and with, you know, running an election. That is a necessity for our democracy. Thank you.
Well, well said, well said. Freeholders, any additional questions? Seeing or hearing none, thank you. Thank you again to our county clerk for that presentation. And please keep us updated if there's anything that we can continue to do to make sure that the right to vote is easy to exercise, you know, for all of our constituents. So thank you.
Thank you, President Gill.
Madam Clerk, our second topic of discussion, please.
Yes. Mr. President, I'd like to introduce the representatives. We're here to talk on the Essex-Hudson Greenway.
Hi, hi there. Could everybody see and hear me?
Yes, and before I begin, I'd just like to also share with the President and the Freeholder Boards, a nice PowerPoint presentation was prepared by the presenters. They were emailed to you, and also you should have received the presentation in hard copy. Please utilize whatever method works for you to follow along with the presentation. You may begin.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So my name is Deanie Lee, and I'm here from the Open Space Institute to present, to talk to you about the creation of a linear park called the Essex-Hudson Greenway. But I just want to start by saying thank you very much for having us today. You know, in light of these past two presentations that I just watched, you know, we really appreciate it. We appreciate the support you gave us last week, and we appreciate you having us here today. I know that there's many, many important things on your plate, and this is, you know, we just really appreciate it. So let me start there and say to you that it's wonderful to be here today. So I'm also here today with Deb Kagan, who represents the New Jersey Bike Walk Coalition. And we are here to tell you about the Essex-Hudson Greenway project, which has been a project that has been in the works for many, many years. And I will, I'm going to go ahead and flip through my slides, and maybe others can do it how they like to. But just a little bit of background, the Open Space Institute is a, we're a regional land trust organization, and our expertise is in conservation real estate, and we're working in partnership with the New Jersey Bike Walk Coalition to try to acquire and create a linear park that runs from Montclair to Jersey City. So I can show you another slide here. It's, it is a little bit less than nine miles, and you can see that it runs through Montclair, Glen Ridge, Bloomfield, through Newark, and into, and it crosses the Passaic River into Hudson County. So it's, it's quite long. It's been a long-term regional goal for many people in Essex and Hudson County.
Yeah, we didn't record.
This is something that's been, people have been working on for almost 20 years. This was the old Booton Line, and it was abandoned, and I think that not abandoned, it was, it was, New Jersey Transit stopped using it in about the year 2000. And just as that happened, people got together and decided that it would be really beneficial for the communities on the line to be able to use it for recreational purposes and commuting, you know, multi-modal commuting. So from 2014 to 2018, New Jersey Bike Walk galvanized support from every community along the line, and every town passed letters of support, the support of this idea of creating it as a linear park. And in 2020, OSI reached an agreement to purchase the line from Norfolk Southern, who currently owns the, who currently owns it. And I'll just say, as background, Norfolk Southern has not, for many years, has really not wanted to sell it. And so it really was a pivotal moment when they could come to the table and decide to put it on the market and sell it. So we do have, but this is a moment right now where they're willing to sell, and we'd like to take advantage of it. I mean, you know, I think there's going to be increased demand for alternative ways to commute to work, alternative ways to get exercise outside. You know, if anything that we've seen in the past, you know, months, these past few months is that people are really turning to their public open spaces as places for rejuvenation, places to gather as a community and see people. And so, you know, we really, despite the fact that it's been such a difficult, difficult time, we do think that there's, you know, a real opportunity here to invest in what the future is going to look like for the region. It's really a regional opportunity. So you can see here, it's almost nine miles long, and it goes through some of the most populated communities in the nation, and some of them right here in Essex County. So it's, you know, it will serve many, many, many people if it is converted into a recreational resource. It will provide access to parks, to schools, to hospitals, hamlets. From a technical point of view, it's 100 feet wide, which is actually quite wide for a rail, for a rail line and would allow for a lot of different kinds of things to happen on it. So it really gives a lot of flexibility, would give a lot of flexibility to future ideas or future development, or even to create space to have some alternative transportation options in addition to, in addition to biking and walking and pedestrian access. From a regional perspective, it also links to the East Coast Greenway and the September 11th National Memorial Trail, and that runs all the way from Pennsylvania to Lower Manhattan. So it works into a part of a larger network of trails that people have been putting together over the years. So, you know, it's an opportunity to invest in neighborhoods. You can see here in this slide that the, you know, that there, it's a moment of where trees are in a place where there aren't, aren't trees already. So this is a pretty slide. All right. I think another important thing to note about it is that it, is that it provides recreational and walking access from schools. So if you look at this slide closely, you know, all the green dots are schools, basically. And, you know, you can imagine a situation where, you know, a school, someone, schoolchildren could walk from home to school using, using this pathway that doesn't have cars on it. So it provides a safer alternative than some of the other, you know, than crossing big streets or whatever for kids. So we think that that could really be, you know, a potential benefit. So this, you know, I think it's, as I said in an earlier slide, it provides a resource for some really diverse communities. This particular slide talks about different languages. And so this is just demonstrative of the kinds of communities that it could impact and how that, you know, it could be very beneficial that way. So because of its width, it offers, it offers a great opportunity also to create some additional park space for people. So you could have your, you know, your walking trail and then, and then sort of build park amenities around it or create opportunities for other open space and recreational use inside the 100-foot right-of-way. So it also connects to a number of different parks and other trails, including Branchford Park in Newark. And actually, the first picture on the, in the first page, that's actually an aerial shot of Branchford Park, coming out of Branchford Park. And actually, if I go back to the previous slide, this is an area in North Newark. You can see that there's a spire there over in the, in the back of the photo. That's, that's the Tiffany Factory. So this gives you a good sense of the opportunities. This obviously is a render, this is just a jumping off point. It's someone's imagination of, you know, their imagination of what could possibly happen there. But it's, it sparks the imagination, so. So it also, as a general matter, provides access to nature in the region. You know, it, you know, has trees and provides, you know, way all the way even into the Meadowlands on the Hudson County side, you know, to a part, sort of a part of New Jersey that most people don't really have access to now. So and just to go back to the, to the, just to give everybody a sense of where we are in the project. You know, the Open Space Institute, we do have an agreement in place with Norfolk Southern to purchase the line. That purchase and sale agreement expires in early '21, but it can be extended if we continue to show progress towards an acquisition of the line for public use. So we continue to, you know, continue to hope to work together with you and partner with Essex County and Hudson County to figure a way, you know, figure out a way forward to make sure that this asset is protected long-term and really is, could be used by the public. So for the past few months, Norfolk Southern has gone through the abandonment process with the SDB, the federal government, and that has really driven the process. So we just got notification last week that the federal government has approved the abandonment of the line. It is officially abandoned now and subject to a rail banking order. But now that that's in hand, and together with the resolutions that you passed last week, I think we're ready to begin to work together with you to figure out how to realize this vision of creating this linear park. On a more technical level, the engineering, there's engineering and survey work ongoing, and environmental studies are underway. We're sort of working hard to gather up all of the facts on the ground with respect to the status of the line, so that you can make, so that the, so Essex County can make a real decision about, you know, how they want to move forward. So we're working hard on that, and, you know, like I said, that work is underway, so. So just a, just final, final moment, we have a brief window of opportunity with the abandonment in hand. Our agreement ends early January, and we're looking forward to working together to establish a pathway to closing and a long-term management and development plan. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I see we also have Deborah on and Adam on. Anything that you would like to add? Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, I would just also like to add my thanks to the Freeholder Board for your support and the resolution. It was a really important resolution for you to pass, and we have been going out to the towns and to community organizations to let people know that the county has passed a resolution and to try to encourage the constituents to reach out to the county freeholders and let them know of their support for this project. So we're going, we started going around to the towns. We're meeting with mayors and town councils as well as community organizations. And we're hoping that people will reach out to you with letters of support so that you get a sense of the broad support we have been experiencing over the years. So I'd also like to particularly thank Freeholder President Gill for your leadership and support over many years for this project that's really helped us get to this point. It's, the way we're looking at this is really a key project for the future in terms of road to recovery after COVID. All of the experience of this type of greenway development across the country has shown a real increase in economic support for the towns that it goes through. There are a lot of statistics that it brings business, that it brings jobs. And particularly in Essex County, it runs through a number of communities where having an option for transportation besides a car is in some ways households-only form of transportation is for biking and walking and transit. So we are providing a new transportation option for communities that haven't had it along with the recreation and open space that Deanie spoke about. And also just, just to add, there's a whole conservation and environment piece to this besides the open space and tree canopy she was talking about. We are also talking to towns about using green infrastructure to help them with combined sewage overflow, sorry, stormwater overflow and sewers and different ways that we can do green infrastructure to help with flooding in the communities. So it's really a combination, this project of not only recreation and open space and for healthy communities to have a space where we can exercise, but also for transportation options, which will relieve some of the congestion and air pollution as well as the conservation for, it's a wildlife corridor, and also to help towns with some of the climate change issues to mitigate around stormwater overflow. So this is a project we see is really combining so many opportunities. Even we have subterranean rights, so it gives us the possibility to also include Wi-Fi along the entire corridor with possible 5G and other possibilities for emergency, emergency corridor for transportation. So it's a very, besides being a multi-use emergency corridor for transportation. So it's a very uh, besides being a multi uh, use path, it really has and brings together, I think, a lot of uh, major issues to benefit uh, the region as a whole. So again, thank you for your support, and we will be reaching out to the communities and and hopefully you will hear from your constituents uh, how important they think this project is in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Deborah. For your work on this. Adam, I will say in the interest of time, is there anything else you'd like to add or? I think we're.
No, good to go. Yeah, just to say thanks. Good, great opportunity. Echo the comments.
Thank you. Um, so I would just say thank you for the presentation, and I would just encourage my um, uh, board members, um, again, to look uh, through the the PowerPoint that's been provided. Um, I, I, in my own opinion, I cannot stress this enough. It's a once in a lifetime opportunity. I mean, when I say once in a lifetime, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity that's before um, the county of Essex to continue the tradition of doing big things, uh, doing them first and doing them well. Um, and Norfolk Southern is absolutely pro, you know, in the market to sell this property. Um, and we have the opportunity to to be a part of its purchase in a very, you know, so on a very basic level. Um, you know, if we do not do everything that we can to try to make this happen, this property most likely is going to get sold one way or the other. Um, and and in my opinion, um, keeping it and protecting it um, as um, open space uh, creating which would probably be the most exclusive, um, it it would be comparable to the High Line in New York in terms of its length um, and um, use, and there would probably be nothing else like it um, anywhere else in the entire country. So um, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. It's not, you know, just uh, you know, a pet project of a couple of people who like to ride bikes. It's much, or walk. It is much, much bigger than that. Um, so hopefully, um, hopefully you do not have to agree, but everyone supported the resolution. So hopefully everyone will continue to keep an eye on this, and I think hopefully we can do all weekend to make it a reality. So thank you for your time today and continue to thank my board members for their continued support on this project.
President, I have a few questions.
On the agreement, I may please?
Yep, the floor is open.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I'm uh, I'm very pleased to see you. This I'm a Jersey City born guy, and I went to St. Peter's Prep. So anything, I one road that leads to Jersey City is exciting for me. Um, more importantly, there's a very valuable lesson about this kind of opportunity. I'm very much involved with the Morris Canal Greenway. I've been involved with it for many years, and once along, once upon a time, I worked at Waterloo Village, which is ground zero for Morris Canal, I have to say inclined planes, locks, and twenty eight historic structures that would still reside there uh, from the time of the canal. And so when the Morris Canal was abandoned and in nineteen twenty four, the state took ownership, there was a real missed opportunity at that time. But there was some grassroots efforts and interest to create a, they didn't call it a Greenway, but a recreational line, if you will, following the spirit of the Morris Canal. That was missed. Ultimately, the canal was chopped up and was basically uh, given to municipalities along its path at first crack. And so many towns like where I live in Bloomfield or Newark, we made uh, subway lines, subway lines out of it. Uh, it was converted into roads or converted into parks. And Bloomfield's five stretch, it now today serves as two bookend parks and the historic Collins Hudson Center. And the reason why I'm telling you all that is because the the canal's development is much more of a challenge because it had laid basically uh, unrestored or unpreserved for so many years, it got chopped up. And so our challenge in Bloomfield for the last, I don't know, seven years that I've been involved with it, and I served as the Greenway Chairman in Bloomfield, our challenge has always been now that it's an urbanized area, how do we connect those parcels of land, historic structures? And we've been able to do that. Um, and it's not always neat and easy, and sometimes it deviates a bit from the historic footprint of the canal. And this here is a wonderful opportunity because it's still intact. And that's really what I want to stress, President, we alluded to this earlier. This is a really historic moment that we can capitalize and be visionary as opposed to in our case with the Morris Canal Greenway, which this does bisect actually here in Bloomfield and probably in a couple of other places. Uh, we have a real opportunity to capitalize on this very unique time. When you look at page four of your slide and you're looking at this beautiful, the tax office says the purchase of the old Booten Line has been a long-term regional goal. Uh, right underneath that, you'll see a big heart and a few words, and that's part of the Be Strong mural that's in Bloomfield. And just two blocks um, east of that is the Morris Canal where it intersects with this location. And if you follow the Morris Canal, a little further down, it intersects with the Lenape Trail, which is of course a very long Greenway here. So this has great connectivity to what is already existing, and I would urge colleagues here, for these two institutions that I know well, and I follow them, and I think do outstanding work, I would urge you to incorporate those lengths in here because I think that people need to see that, that there are other Greenways that it connects to. In the case of the Morris Canal Greenway, there's a over a hundred organizations involved, grassroots, bigger ones, municipalities, and trying to recreate that one hundred and two mile journey across the state. We've probably got about like sixty percent of that going on. Jersey City just got a very large grant and is doing some substantial work. The State County a few years ago got a significant grant, uh, top grant, and they're doing some great work there as well. And Essex County, we've been very busy trying to do that. I know there's some efforts in Belleville that are beginning uh, to to rise as well on top of uh, what Bloomfield has done. So I'd urge you to link the Greenways together, uh, because I think that we are, there's no competition. It's just all, it's just more of a great thing, and we love it. And we would, I think, increase awareness and support by being able to show that connectivity. I love to be able to support this in whatever way I can because this has been a real passion of mine to be able to do that. So please count on me uh, for support of this and whatever I can do. Uh, it relates to my professional work, which is when I'm not freeloaded, as it were, uh, just having a little fun with it, but um, we we have a good time with this Greenway, and it has proven uh, to be wonderful results. And I feel that this project here can have the same, if not perhaps more, because it's being intact and it resonates very well. And uh, the funny footnote, it's where my wild turkeys from my neighborhood come from. They hide in the in the abandoned lines here, uh, and they come in the neighborhood in the historic district. So it is a great corridor for the wildlife as well. I've actually walked it from here to Newark and back with my son, and it's a great journey to explore. And if this was developed into uh, into a complete um, Greenway, it would just be outstanding. And you're right, uh, Mr. President, it would be akin to what New York City has with the High Line over there. So I'm fully supported, supporting of this and very committed to do what I can to uh, help you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a few questions.
Absolutely, please.
Okay, mention was made that this has to be in coordination with Essex and Hudson County. So I'd like to know where are you with Hudson County? Are they in support?
Um, yeah, so I can, I can answer that question. So hopefully in in two hours, they'll be passing the same resolution or a similar resolution to what you folks passed last week. So um, for the most part, you know, you you're moving in 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 tandem with each other. So so I think that's good news.
I'm glad to hear that. I think this is a fantastic project, and I have a question. Once it gets started, how long do you think it will take until it's totally finished?
You know, we get that question a lot, and it's a tough question for us to answer. Um, because uh, you know, my sense of it, our sense of it is that it will probably get worked on in pieces, right? So you know, you'll you'll take chunks of it and do, you know, different things with with, you know, a particular, a particular piece of it. I also think it will depend a lot on uh, what the communities along the line want. Um, so we've been very careful in it in our work so far um, to to, you know, to say that this is really a resource for the community, and and so the communities need to determine their future with respect to it. And so I I I don't, I would be afraid really to answer that question in any, in any firm way, um, but hopefully not too long.
I appreciate that answer because of the High Line in New York City really didn't take as long as I thought it would take, and it's absolutely fantastic. So if this is anything like that, it's going to be a tremendous asset to this area.
Right. So Deb and I were talking about this a little earlier today, and we said, you know, I think it'll happen faster if we can make sure that we get many, many people to express their support for it. That that um, you know, that's really a key piece is to make sure that people, you know, voice it, say that they want it and say what they want, and I think it can move along.
Well, there's no reason they would be against it. It's a tremendous asset, and thank you for your great work. I think this is wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Okay, thank you. I would say just in one answer um, to the Freeholders' question too, and timing, timing on the Essex County side, hopefully if if we're able to move forward, could potentially be quicker. Um, at least from the um, Montclair uh, through Newark, you know, till we try to cross over into Hudson. So just from a purely, um, you know, it's it's the, it's Essex Hudson Greenway, but getting it started here on our side, I think could be, you know, if we're able to um, and I'm not, and I'm not going to try to play an environmental engineer, but it from what I understand and from what I've seen, I think we could move fairly quickly on the Essex portion of the trail to get it up, running, up to speed, and even just that piece alone to, you know, to have that accessibility um, from Montclair, Bloomfield and Belleville um, into, you know, into, you know, our largest city. Um, you know, it would be huge, so.
Right. And so I'll just, I'll also add the first step though is to to acquire it, to 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 sort of get it out of Norfolk Southern's hands. I think that's the first step, so.
We'll probably wrap it up here. I know we'll be hearing from you soon, um, again, um, and um, you know, looking forward to understanding a little bit better the next steps in terms of what next steps we need to take as a county to um, help. We know, you know, that the, this is probably where the rubber meets the road, no pun intended, about long-term financial commitment, um, you know, to making this happen. So we look forward to those conversations. Of course, we'll be partnering. Uh, and we're very thankful to have also the support of the administration up to this point from our county executive, uh, Phil Olajia, who's been great um, uh, on this project, uh, Robert Jackson, and the entire team. So I know there's some more conversations that we have to have, but you know, we're looking forward to having those and and hopefully finding a way that the county can um, absolutely be a partner in in moving the project forward. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move to public comment session. Today's uh, meeting is a combined conference board meeting, and we will vote on every item on the agenda. Uh, however, since we are meeting remotely, um, the public, uh, the public had the opportunity to uh, submit questions and comments for consideration and could also call in. At this point of the meeting, the clerk will have additional instructions for our callers. Madam Clerk.
Uh, Mr. President, the constituents were given a window of time to call in prior to the meeting if they wish to participate by phone or send in emails um, for comments uh, prior to the meeting. If if you have called in, you will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. At this time, our public information officer will announce the callers so they can state their comments or question and be reminded that you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while while calling in. At this time, um, only the calls that were for agenda items only will be heard. Please note, you will have the opportunity to call back later in the meeting at the designated time for public comment session uh, for non-agenda items for the second public comment session. Uh, Charlo Malumba is our public information officer, and he will present the first caller. Charlo.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do not have any callers in the queue waiting to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. So uh, at this time, then I will read the emails that I have received for agenda items. The first comment was submitted by Jim Price of Montclair, New Jersey regarding Resolution twenty one. In June, the Freeholders passed a non-binding resolution that recommended releasing some detainees because of the virus. Since it was non-binding, it seems to have been forgotten and come to nothing, but the virus as we know it is still killing people in jail. I would like to know from the commissioners, what action each of you have taken to publicly promote your resolution since its passage. Whom have you contacted to encourage action? The county executive, the governor, our centers, ICE, local papers, respectfully, Jim Price. The next comment was submitted by Kathy O'Leary of Pax Christie, New Jersey regarding Resolution twenty one. Dear Board of Commissioners, I'm writing you to comment on Agenda Item twenty one regarding an expenditure for the Essex County Correctional Facility. While this may be a worthwhile expenditure, I urge you to take a hard look at the finances of the facility prior to approving any expenditures of the ECCF. Though I find it repugnant that you would consider jailing people at business, this seems to be the language that you speak. Since the pandemic, the number of people detained by ICE in your jails have declined precipitously. It is not, it is nowhere near the moneymaker you and the administration once thought it to be. I would also like to point out that your PR campaign, including the establishment of an oversight task force, is losing ground daily. You just cannot cover up the stain of an intentionally cruel, racist and genocidal system. Yes, that is right. ICE is now being described as genocidal and racist by people in the mainstream. Further, at a virtual forum by the Congressional Committee on Homeland Security moderated by New Jersey's own block, Bonnie Watson Coleman, she connected the atrocities being committed by ICE in the Irwin Detention Center to those at the Essex County Jail. In addition, Laura Rivera of South, of the Southern Poverty Law Center, who spoke at this panel, also stated that the immigration detention is meant to maintain white supremacy, and she called for all of these ICE jails to be shut down now. I urge you to follow her advice. The next comment was submitted by Whitney Strube of Newark, New Jersey regarding Resolution two. Dear Commissioners, I'd like to comment on Agenda Item number two under Section K one. I do so in openly bad faith, not even having read the resolution because I feel bad faith is what your approach to democracy merits. What a shameful thing it is to watch you suppress a vibrant grassroots movement against your ICE collaborations through underhanded procedural moves clearly designed to suppress public participation in county government. I've yet to receive a response to my questions at your last meeting about who decided to limit public comment to written comments submitted by five P M. The day before, but there is absolutely nothing stopping you from simply ask, answering right now. In Hudson and Bergen Counties, members of the public get to speak directly to freeholders who respond with a direct back and forth. Why can't you do this? Why do you instead be, build the Trump light wall to barricade yourselves from your own constituents? It is a sad spectacle to see you hiding this way, not even pretending to be anything other than functionary, functionaries of Joe D's political machine. Are you afraid of democracy? Nevertheless, there remains a movement in Essex County, one committed to destroying ICE and all collaboration with it, such as your contract to do its dirty work and also rethinking our overreliance on jails and prisons. Their reform in twenty seventeen now looks like a missed opportunity to downsize these facilities. But that is exactly what activists will continue demanding. Whether or not you let us speak for ourselves at your meetings, including those of your oversight body that has yet done very little to instill faith in its work, even in the midst of this deadly pandemic. In conclusion, in your ICE contract, and begin moving away from a crass commitment to filling jails, defeat your corrections monster, I invite you to join all the political education work of North Jersey Democratic Socialists of America, which has been which has been reading about prison abolition and what it might look like. All meetings are open to the public, and it would be great to engage with some of you in actual dialogue. The next uh, comment was submitted by Jake Eifros. No address given regarding Resolution twenty one. Dear Board of Chosen Freeholders, my name is Jake. I'm writing you once again. Dear Board of Chosen Freeholders, my name is Jake. I'm writing you once again to call attention to the injustice of the Essex County Correctional Facility. You will be voting on spending potential tens of thousands of taxpayers' dollars on scheduling software for prisons that is notorious for unsafe and unhealthy conditions. How will spending this money advance justice for people detained by ICE there? How will spending this money help liberate those who are incarcerated during the COVID-19 pandemic from which New Jersey has seen the highest rates of death in prisons in the country? How will you, how will spending this money get us any closer to aligning the espoused progressive values of our community with the actual practices of our punitive criminal justice system and brutal immigration detention regime? As you vote on what may seem like an innocuous and bureaucratic budget item, I urge you to keep in mind what kind of moral atrocities will be scheduled, managed and computed with this software. The question isn't whether the software will benefit the smooth and efficient operations of ECCF. The question is whether you as elected officials have the courage to take on the crises of our racist carceral system in a substantive and committed way. That is enough with the non-binding resolutions. The final comment submitted for public comment for agenda items was submitted by Matt Dragon of West Orange, New Jersey regarding Resolution 21. On Agenda Item K21, a question requesting response. Will this scheduling system allow the county to better utilize our corrections workforce? For example, I was told that if we ended the ICE contract, despite dropping the population by almost 40% at the time, the cost for salaries and benefits would only go down by 17%. With the software being purchased, the facility better scheduling to avoid a 23% mismatch between staffing expenses and the population being overseen by that staff. What happens to staffing when almost 60 prisoners of ICE are removed in a day? Does the staffing level drop the following day accordingly? Isn't that close to the population of an entire dorm or cell block? Happy to see K34 on the agenda as well as safe housing is public health, and that's only more true during a pandemic. I'm pleased that the Essex County Administration moved quickly to put pause evictions early in the pandemic. However, I'm concerned that the floodgates will open immediately after pandemic. So this is an important bill at the state level. Requesting response. What if anything the county, what if anything does the county plan to do to prevent a massive wave in evictions striking whenever the last of the legal restrictions at the state or county ends? What other legal levels have been discussed that the county can use? And finally, on the ECCF Task Force meeting, I would encourage you to watch the video of the first public meeting. There is something, there are some promising lines of inquiry happening on the medical healthcare fronts. And I encourage everyone, commissioners and the public, to follow along with the work they're doing. Submit questions and spread the word that they are looking for input. They can be reached at jailtaskforce@essexcountynj.org. Thank you, Matt Dragon. That concludes, Mr. President, our public comments on agenda items. And later on, in the meeting, Mr. President, you will announce and give me, allow me to have instructions for public comments for non-agenda items.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for introduction and first reading?
Yes, Mr. President. You have, there are two.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's read ordinance number one into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
I spoke to everybody today. So, who's getting married, Sarah?
As a reminder, please make sure you're unmuted if you're speaking. And those who are not speaking, please be, through Mr. President, please be mindful that you mute yourselves.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Microphone's not behaving. Mr. Herman, who's the Executive Director of the ECUA, is here to address these, both of these ordinance, Mr. President.
Good afternoon, members of the board, and thank you. I am Elmer Herman. I'm the Executive Director of the Essex County Utilities Authority, which is the regulatory agency for the collection and disposal of solid waste in the county. We're here this afternoon to request legislative action by the Board of Freeholders. The Essex County Utilities Authority went out to bid in two particular categories. The first one is the ordinance that you're considering at this point, which is a ordinance for the disposal of solid waste type 13 for a five-year period from January 1, 2021 until December 31, 2025. The lowest responsible bidder was a company by the name of Advanced Enterprises Recycling. And they are located in Newark with a transfer station at 540 Deremis Avenue. That bid was reviewed carefully by authority staff, by our financial people, and our Board of Commissioners, by way of resolution, approved the five-year public bid contract with Advanced Enterprises Recycling and is requesting that the Freeholder Board, by ordinance, approve a amendment to the Essex County Plan to include the contract itself and the disposal facility of Advanced Enterprises at 540 Deremis Avenue, and its two landfills, which are located in Ohio Apex Sanitary Landfill and Keystone Sanitary Landfill. We'd just like to say that we were particularly pleased. There were two bidders. They were both qualified. But this particular bidder for the five-year period, the price that was presented was actually $6 million, $6,700,000 lower than the other bidder. Secondly, the facility at 540 Deremis Avenue has rail, has rail capabilities. And that's an important thing too, because that will cut down a lot of truck traffic in that particular area. So for all those reasons, we're asking the Board, by ordinance, to amend the plan, to have the contract with this facility included in the Essex County District Solid Waste Management Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prolabekio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a question for Mr. Herman. I, I do have a question for Mr. Herman. Inclusion of this facility, Elmer, does that replace any existing facilities that receive this type of waste, or is it an additional site?
Yes. The, the prior public bid contract expires on this December 31. And therefore, this one commences on January 1. So it was, it was a different bidder. In act, in actuality, Waste Management had won the bid five years ago and they performed. But in this particular situation, Advanced Enterprises was the low bidder. So they will replace Waste Management on the issue of collection of type 13, which is the bulky waste. The bulky waste that you see the people putting out on the sidewalks and bulky waste collection day, the mattresses, the furniture, the furnishings, et cetera.
Got it. That's what I wanted to make clear, that it was a replacement and not an additional site.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Now, do you want me to address the second one also?
Let's, let's move through, let's, let's move through ordinance number one. Mr. McInerney?
I have no questions on this, but I did want to remind the Freeholders that at the leadership meeting, we did discuss with Mr. Herman the financial position of the ECUA as well, and the debt reduction, which I believe Mr. Herman comes, is eliminated by 2022. So the theory was that there should be some rate reductions that are anticipated in that year or in the subsequent year.
That is, that is correct. That is correct. The bonded indebtedness has gone from $104 million back in January of 2003 to $25 million at the end of 2019. And if we continue to pay as we have been paying by the end of 2022, it should be at zero.
That's great news, Elmer.
Thank you.
Okay, Freeholders, any questions or comments? Okay, hearing or seeing none. I have a motion from Freeholder Graham and a second from Freeholder Johnson to move ordinance number one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Freeholder Sevo?
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson?
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares?
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado?
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano?
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson?
Yes.
Freeholder Graham?
Yes.
Freeholder Cooper, absent Freeholder President Gill?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Moving to Resolution Number Two, if we can read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Herman?
Thank you. This is a companion, a request by the Essex County Utilities Authority. This one is for 150,000 tons of what we call tycho, which is actually commercial garbage, the, from the stores and shops and restaurants and bars in and about Essex County, four or five, the same five-year period. And this is the low, the lowest responsible bidder here was Waste Management, who also has had this contract for the past five years. Which public bid contract will expire on December 31 of this year? So this is a, a new contract that will go forward from January 1 on, of 2021 to December 31, 2025. This is a company that the Utilities Authority has worked with. It was a good bid as far as the finances are concerned, as far as Essex County is concerned. They do have a facility, a transfer station at Julia Street in Elizabeth, just across the border from Essex County. And the purpose of our request is that the Freeholders, by ordinance, include the public bid contract that the authority has entered into with Waste Management into the Essex County District Solid Waste Plan, together with the landfill facility, which is the Fairless Landfill in Morrisville, Pennsylvania. I should have also mentioned on the first one, and it'll be the same situation. These type of matters require a second reading and public hearing, so we will have to be back in a, in a couple more weeks, as far as that is concerned. And then ultimately, the matter is referred to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. And we seek to continue to approve from them for the regulatory waste flow control that we have had for the past number of years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prolabekio?
I don't have any questions on this one.
Okay, Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Okay, Freeholders? Okay, hearing and seeing none. I have a motion from Freeholder Johnson and a second from Freeholder Luciano. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Freeholder Cooper, absent Freeholder Graham?
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson?
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano?
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado?
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares?
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson?
Yes.
Freeholder Sevo?
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill?
Yes.
So moved. And through you, Mr. President, someone has their phone ringing. If you could put your phone on silent.
That was me. I couldn't, I couldn't get it to stop.
Through you, Mr. President, may I say that Administrator Jackson is a little challenged this evening?
You, you may not, Madam Clerk, because we, we need Mr. Jackson for this meeting. I want Mr. Jackson to be happy and in a good mood, so you may not say that. About our county administrator.
All right, Mr. President, he is the best. And I mean.
All right, thank you.
$20 is coming, Madam Clerk. I appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for listing purposes only?
Mr. President, we have none.
Okay, do we have any ordinances or resolutions on second reading and public hearing?
Mr. President, we have none.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution Number One, which is with the Office of the County Council, which we can read into the record at a later time.
Mr. President, County Council Gassion is here to address this item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Courtney Gassion. Good afternoon, Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council. This is an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement to provide legal services regarding the matter of the County of Essex and Essex County Board of Chosen Freeholders versus Aetna Inc. This is a contract with the outside law firm of Decotis. It's Patrick Cole and Giblin for the period of January 1 through December 31, 2020. This is a contract that we have come to the Freeholder Board on previously. The original contract was in the amount of $50,000 for this year. We did increase it earlier this year in May by another $60,000, and this is the request for an additional 50, bringing the total amount for calendar year 2020 to 160,000. I will just remind the Board that this is still a contingency contract for the Decotis firm. This is now in litigation. They will only recover their legal fees in the event that there's a recovery either through a trial or settlement. The cost that we are seeking through this $160,000 to cover is the cost for our experts in this case. You will also recall, this is a complicated contract litigation that has had tens of thousands of documents that need to be retained and archived, as well as both an economic expert and an insurance underwriting expert. We have had successful results in this litigation thus far with a positive ruling by a federal court judge. At this point, the only outstanding issue is the damages. We are in the process of filing summary judgment motions. Our adversary has filed a cross motion for summary judgment. If those motions are not successful on either side, then the, the issue of damages will go to a hearing. So this amount is in anticipation of those experts having to prepare reports for that hearing and potentially testify as well. There is also, as there often is in litigation, the possibility that the case could still settle. And our adversary has renewed those discussions for settlement through a mediation overseen by a retired federal judge. If that course is taken, then we would need the experts to be available for that mediation as well. So this is anticipating that there's going to be some costs that are going to have to be laid out by the county in the coming months in an effort to bring this case to a final resolution. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Freeholders? Questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Prolabekio?
Just to make sure I'm clear, Courtney, this is for. Just to, uh, make sure I'm clear. Courtney, this is for, um, this is, uh, not for legal fees, but for the law firm to, uh, to, uh, retain. These are the costs for the law firm to retain this expert, right?
They've already been retained. So, so this is an expert that's been on board for, uh, for a while now. This is to cover the additional costs that we anticipate the expert will, uh, have to charge us for the, the, uh, ongoing, um, litigation regarding the damages and, and that expert correct is paid through the law firm. So it, these are not for legal fees.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. McInerney?
Um, I'm assuming that the, uh, structure of this, uh, paying the expert not directly from the county, but through the law firm is to maintain the privilege between, um, the county and the, uh, expert.
That is, that is correct. Through you, Mr. President, that is correct, Mr. McInerney.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, hearing and seeing, uh, none. I have a motion from Freeholder Luciano and a second from Freeholder Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Freeholder Seville?
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson?
Yes.
Freeholder Pumarres?
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado?
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano?
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson?
Yes.
Freeholder Graham?
Yes.
Freeholder Cooper, absent Freeholder President Gill?
President not voting.
So moved.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move to resolution, Madam Clerk, uh, resolution number two, uh, which is from the Office of the County Administrator. Uh, we can read into the record at a later time.
You're right, Madam Clerk. I am really in bad shape here. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, Ma, um, Mr. Avaleo and, uh, Ms. Brown Smeraldo are here to address this item.
Thank you. This resolution will allow the county to give, uh, additional funding to local agencies and towns. As you know, in the past, there has been a resolution to give dollars to the towns, to the towns, and specifically to get another fifteen million dollars. We requested from the towns what their needs were. Uh, at that time, two towns did not request any additional funds. So as you can see from the list, there's only twenty of the twenty-two towns where additional funds are needed. We went through their requests, looked for things that the CARES Act would not cover, looked for things that cannot be done. As you know, the funding becomes, uh, has to go back as of December thirtieth. So we looked for those things that were more long-term that would not be able to be done. We were also asked at that time to reach out to the Essex County Improvement Authority, the Essex County Utility Authority, Essex County College, and Essex County Schools of Technology. At that time, the Utility Authority said they didn't need any funding. The college said that they got, uh, CARES funds from the federal government themselves, and we're actively working with that money. So neither of them requested any additional funding. So the total we're requesting is fifteen million, six hundred and ninety-four thousand, and will have to be spent by December thirtieth, which is when the money runs out from the federal government. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Prolvekio?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
I have some questions. I have some questions. Anthony, Anthony, you said that, did you say that there were two towns that didn't request CARES funding?
That's right.
Which two towns did not request it and why?
Um, we never heard back from them. Uh, it was Cedar Grove and Essex Fells. Uh, we sent down multiple emails, phone calls. It was mentioned during the mayor's meeting. They never came back to us with a request.
It was Cedar Grove and?
Essex Fells.
Essex Fells. And so you don't know why they didn't want any more money?
No.
All right. Thanks for the information. I wonder why they didn't want it.
If I, if I may, Mr. President, I, um, I think, and Mr. Avaleo can correct me if I'm wrong, but both of those towns had adequate dollars from the first allocation that left over, that they didn't need additional money, Freeholder, for in the second round. So they still had, they had a substantial sum left from the first amount of money that we allocated.
All right, thanks. That explains it. Thank you.
Additional questions, Freeholders?
Just thank you, Anthony, for all your great work.
You're welcome.
Uh, on the original thirty million, thirty million, um, can we run through the allocations per municipality?
Um, let me, uh, do you want me to say which each town got?
How much did, how much did each town receive on the first thirty million that we dedicated?
Okay, uh, Bellevue received, uh, I'm gonna round, so take a little bit more time if it, with actuals. Uh, Bellevue was about a million four, Bloomfield a million six, Caldwell about two hundred thousand, Cedar Grove nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, East Orange two million nine, Essex Fells fifty-two thousand, Fairfield two hundred and eighty thousand, uh, Glen Ridge one hundred and sixty-eight, Irvington two million three eighty-four, Livingston one million oh seventy-nine, Maplewood three, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, Millburn three hundred and seventy-two thousand, Montclair million dollars, uh, Newark ten million nine thirty-two, Caldwell one thirty-seven, Nutley eight eighty-two, Orange one million two eighty-five, Roseland two hundred and ten thousand, South Orange two hundred and ninety-five thousand, Verona three hundred and twenty-one thousand, West Caldwell five hundred and twenty-one thousand, and West Orange two million two hundred and sixty thousand. ECIA, Essex County School Technologies weren't in the original allocation.
Thank you. So, um, the, are authorities of municipalities able to receive CARES Act funding through this program, through this, the way we're allocating the money this way? If a township has a, has a, has their own authority, Utilities Authority, or?
That would be up to the town. Our MOUs are with the town. If they wish to pay the bills of an authority or the library and then submit them to us, yes, they can. It would really be up to them.
But that, that, that would be permissible under the CARES Act?
Yes.
Okay. We haven't had any municipality ask for that.
We've had a couple municipalities who paid the library, and then in turn, we were able to reimburse the towns. As far as authorities are concerned, no one's asked.
Okay. Um, and we don't have the request yet for the fifteen, so we've just, so do we have requests yet for the fifteen, the new fifteen million, or, or we're waiting now on those requests?
We're waiting. We'd have to wait until you pass the resolution, as well as they, they would have to pass the MOUs. So it's, it's going forward.
Got it. So we passed this, they passed the MOUs, and then they?
They can draw down.
And then they come back to us. And then we vet that to make sure it's compliant, and then we cut the checks.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your work on this. Uh, do you have any additional questions or comments, Freeholders? One, I'm sorry, one final question. Re- revenue loss is still uncovered by CARES Act money?
That's right. Right now, revenue loss is still not covered.
Okay. And, and again, just in some of this, we can only go on some of the municipalities, so when you have, it, again, we've just kind of come, not to pick on Cedar Grove right now, but Cedar Grove received almost a million in the last round, which is maybe why they didn't come back to us. Maybe that was enough for them to cover, but there's other fairly substantially larger-sized communities that are around the same number of money received. What, what are some of the possible simple explanations for that?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat that? You broke up. I missed about half the question.
Sure. So Cedar Grove received, I think you said, nine eighty-nine. So it's almost, they received almost a million dollars, which I guess makes sense to me why they didn't come back on the second round. But why would, again, why would a community that's, um, in terms of size, be receiving almost the same amount as a, you know, as a community that's two or three times larger? So they're, they're close to, I mean, Montclair and Cedar Grove are almost identical in, in amount received.
Well, I can, I can address that, uh, Mr. President. Uh, if you may recall, we did a, uh, an, an algorithm basically to come up with the funding mechanism based on, uh, percent of the Essex County population, percent of the, uh, cases in Essex County, and also the percent of deaths in, in Essex County. And, uh, Cedar Grove, although it is a smaller community, had an inordinate amount of, uh, cases and particularly deaths. Um, and so, for example, in, in your, uh, for example, um, uh, Montclair, uh, has had, uh, fifty-two, uh, reported deaths in, uh, from the virus. Cedar Grove has had a hundred and thirteen. So when you look at the number of cases and deaths, uh, it, it, it warrants the funding. So with population really was only a portion of what drove the funding. It was also a substantial portion looked at how hard that community was hit. So even though Cedar Grove is a small community, it was particularly har- hard hit. That's what drove the, uh, additional funding.
Got it. Thank you. Maybe helpful. I have no further questions. Um, I have a motion, uh, from, uh, Freeholder Mercado and a second from Freeholder Pumarres. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Freeholder Cooper, absent Freeholder Graham?
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson?
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano?
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado?
Yes.
Freeholder Pumarres?
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson?
Yes.
Freeholder Seville?
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill?
Yeah.
So moved.
I did have a question on that, if you don't mind. Um, was that formula updated on the second round of funding municipalities, or was predicated, the allocation predicated on the same numbers that were plotted for thirty million?
The formula was more of a hybrid. It, uh, we took into account what they were requesting. If a town was requesting a hundred thousand to get through year end, and they would have normally gotten two hundred thousand, we're not going to give them two hundred thousand. So it was predicated first on what they said they needed, and then on, after that, whatever was left over was done at the same percentages as the first allocation.
So the, the first round of allocations was based on, um, what the town requested?
The first allocation was done strictly by the, um, the method, but part of it was the allocation if, if they, if they didn't ask for less.
Okay. So if somebody asked for a half a million dollars, and it fit into the fifteen million, six ninety-four, whatever it is, then they got the half a million dollars?
If their allocation would have been higher, yes, because we didn't want to give out money. They said they?
It was limited to the original allocation. There was a cap on it.
Yes.
Okay. So you applied the original out, uh, the, the original allocation, and then you looked at the request, and as long as the request was less than the original allocation or equal to, they, then they would get that money?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, resolution three has been withdrawn. Move to number four, uh, which is from the Commission of Registrations. Registrations, I'll read into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Uh, Mr. President, Superintendent Ball is here to address this item.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the Freeholder Board. Edna Ball, Superintendent of Elections, Commissioner of Registration. The resolution before you is for an extension of a existing two-year contract for printing of our poll books. Royal Printing has served us since January of nineteen, of two thousand and nineteen, and done a very good job, especially in this last election in July, when we were doing a different kind of poll book hybrid. They worked very closely with us in that election, as well as all elections before. So we're very pleased with the services they provide. And Mr. Omar Samadi from Royal Printing is also on the line if the Board has any questions for him or, or for me.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Would you like to add anything?
Hello, can you hear me? Yes, I'm here.
Would you like to add anything?
No, we're good.
Great presentation. Um, well said.
Uh, well, we please set to provide services to the Office of the Superintendent and Essex County in general.
Great. Uh, Mr. Prolvekio?
I'll follow up to that.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Freeholders, any additional questions or comments? Okay, and a motion from Freeholder Pumarres and a second from Freeholder Vice President Richardson. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Freeholder Seville?
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson?
Yes.
Freeholder Pumarres?
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado?
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano?
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson?
Yes.
Freeholder Graham?
Yes.
Freeholder Cooper, absent Freeholder President Gill?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to resolutions number five through ten, which are all the Department of Parks and Rep.
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Zace is here to address items five through nine.
Uh, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Justin.
Yeah, what, we're gonna, and why don't we take them all, all at once, please, five through nine?
Good afternoon, Justin. This is Essex County Parks. Uh, number five is a contract award to Down-to-Earth Farms to provide pickup, removal, and disposal of animal waste at the Turtleback Zoo. It's a twenty-fourth month contract, not to exceed a hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred twelve dollars. The contract is for the vendor to provide two thirty-yard dumpsters to remain on-site at the zoo, and it includes, uh, them to pick up, remove, and dispose of one of the dumpsters on alternate, alternate weeks. Uh, additionally, there's an as-needed allotment for an additional thirty-yard dumpster, uh, which will also include pickups, removal, and disposal. Number six is a contract award to Brandano Displays to furnish and deliver holiday light accessories, amount not to exceed twenty-three thousand eighty dollars. This is for, uh, Brandano to, uh, furnish and deliver various sets of string lights. These are lights that the county, or specifically the Parks Department, will be purchasing. Uh, they're not lentils. Uh, various different string lights, red, green, blue, pink, uh, and they're also providing some additional bulbs and, uh, and whatnot. Number seven is, uh, insertion of items of revenue from the State, uh, Department of Community Affairs for the new building at Week Quake Park. This is actually the funding for item number thirty-six. Uh, that'll be coming up later on the agenda. Uh, this is funding source for that. Number eight and number nine, um, combined are the funding sources for number ten. Number eight specifically is a two-million-dollar insertion of revenue from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Tech Protection Green Acres Program. And number nine is a four-million-dollar budget insertion for, from the Department of Community Affairs. And again, both are for, uh, number ten, which is the construction of, uh, Hendrick's Field Golf Course improvements. Would you like me to also, uh, include number ten and thirty-six or ten?
I'm, I'm okay taking number ten if there was a reason. I know, Mr. Jackson, if there was a reason. We only wanted to do five through nine.
No, I'm, I'm, my, my mistake, Mr. Mr. President. Josh can handle number ten as well.
Okay, yeah, let's do five through ten.
Sure. Item number ten is the actual, uh, funding award with, um, with Turco Golf, uh, who is the lowest responsible bidder for the Hendrick's Golf Course project. It's a total of five million, one hundred eighty-one dollars, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. Uh, the project will include general course improvements, rebuilding of holes, green, these fairways, entrance improvements, tree removal, landscape improvements, drainage and irrigation improvements, car path improvements, uh, the removal of bunkers, maintenance buildings, maintenance building renovations, parking lot improvements, uh, as well as benches and trash receptacles.
Hey, um, are there any vendors that, that you have on the line that you would like to, us to hear from?
Hi, this is Sanji Vargas, the county engineer. I have been?
Hi, this is Sanji Vargis, the county engineer. I have Dennis Turco, the vendor on line.
Yes, yeah, we're here. Dennis and Larry Turco.
You want to just explain about your business and what you have done for Essex County in the past and your experience?
We're golf course builders and renovations. We worked multiple jobs for Essex County. Twelve, eleven years ago, we redone, it was a seven-point-five-million-dollar job. We renovated Hendrick's, Weekwake, and Francis Burn. A year and a half ago, we renovated the first and fifth hole at Francis Burn for seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. We worked at the Turtleback Zoo for Essex. And that's about it for jobs that we completed for access.
He can answer any questions, Mr. President, if you have.
Okay, thank you. Freeholders, any questions? Okay. Resolutions five through ten, Mr. Parlevekio?
Mr. President, I don't have a question of the vendor, just with regard to the funding source. On number ten, I see that it's completely grant-funded by the two insertions in eight and nine. Item number eight is a multi-parks, multi-parks grant in the amount of two hundred, two million, a portion of which is being used for the Turco Golf contract. What's the excess of that grant going to be used for? I think it's about one-point-one or one-point-two million of the two million that will be used for the Hendrick's Field improvements.
Joshua Zace, Essex County Parks, through you, Mr. President. So there's going to be a balance of about eight-hundred-and-eighteen thousand from this six million. And we anticipate using that eight-hundred-and-eighteen thousand for phase two of the project, which was the first T-building.
Thank you.
Mr. McInerney?
Doesn't number resolution eight over two million also require an additional two million to come out of the Green Acres Fund?
Joshua Zace, Essex County Parks, through you, Mr. President. You are correct, Mr. McInerney, in that Green Acres Funds do have to be matched dollar per dollar. However, you can match Green Acres Funds with the DCA money.
Okay, so although I have a letter indicating that we have to match, project two million in a matching grant funding, we're not going to do that. We're going to use the DCA money rather than our open space trust fund money. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Also, Mr. President, item thirty-six is the contract that relates to item seven. I don't know if you want to go through that one at this time.
Please.
Mr. Zace? Or Mr. Vargis, either?
I will yield the floor to the director.
Yeah, this is for the Weekwake Park Building Project, building number ninety-two. The plan is to demolish the existing building and construct a brand-new building with approximately seventy-two thousand, seventy-two hundred square feet of building space and another twenty-five hundred square feet of exterior space. New building with covered porch, patio, circular drop-off, new bathrooms, interior and exterior, a party room, new kitchen. It's almost similar to the building we have in Cedar Grove, the Oatole Building. We built another building in Watsasing Park, almost similar to that, but much bigger in scope. I have, we had the bid last week, and there was like twenty-five bids on this job. And the lowest bidder is APS. I have, I have a person lady from APS on the line. Mr. Daniel, come out if you have any questions with him. Daniel?
Yes, freeholders, I am present here to answer any questions. I'm Vice President, General Counsel at APS Contracting. We've done a number of jobs for the county over the past several years. The couple playgrounds in Nutley and Verona, the Shirts headquarters in Newark, and at the Turtleback Zoo, but I can answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Freeholders?
So you, Mr. President?
Freeholder?
A couple questions. Where's your company located?
It's located in Patterson.
You're in Patterson. Is this, so how many Essex County residents do you employ?
Well, sir, I'm an Essex County resident. I live in Nutley. As far as other individuals in
I'm not talking about the owner of the company, I'm talking about the workers. How many workers that work for, who are full-time workers for APS live in Essex County?
No, I don't, I apologize, I don't have an actual number in that, with respect to that. I know, I do know some of the people that are working on the projects. My apologies, my apologies. I do know that some of the people that are working on our projects live in Clifton, live in, I'm sorry, live in in Belleville, in Bloomfield, and live in Essex County, but I don't have numbers for you, sorry.
So you don't have, do you know how many Essex County residents are employed by APS?
I don't have a number for that, and also I don't have a number with respect to, on a project-by-project basis, we typically employ different workforces. We don't have a single workforce that works on all our projects. And I don't have a number as to what we'd be working on this project.
How many minorities do you employ?
Again, it varies from project to project, and I don't have a number to give you. If it's information that's important, we can try to get that to the Department of Public Works.
So you don't know how many full-time minority residents you have? You don't know how many full-time Essex County residents you have? I certainly would like to know that number. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
This four million five-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, that's a drop-dead price. They can't go a penny over it?
I will let Mr. Vargis respond to that question, Mr. Vice President.
Yes, Sanji Vargis, county engineer, that is the lump sum price for the project, and we don't expect to go over it.
So no change orders, no nothing? It is, that's the price they bid, and that's what they have to stick to?
That is the price they bid, and that's the lump sum price we will be going by. There's no change.
Okay, so the county will not be paying a penny over that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is not, this will not be a project labor agreement. There will be no union workers on this?
This is not a PLA contract. The previous one was, and this was less than five million dollars, and that's why this was not a PLA.
Okay, please get that information to me.
Absolutely.
We start in moments, Vice President. Okay, additional questions? Mr. Parlevekio?
No additional questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
I have a motion from, make sure it's okay, a motion from Vice President Richardson?
No, pass it to someone else.
Thank you, Vice President. Do I have a mover on resolutions five through ten and number?
I'll move it.
Thirty-six.
Number thirty-six. Thirty-six.
Thirty-six was the other number.
Five through ten and resolution thirty-six.
I'll move it.
Five through ten and number thirty-six. Second by Freeholder Siebel. Roll call, Madam Kirk.
Freeholder Cooper, absent. Freeholder Graham?
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson?
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano?
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado?
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares?
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson?
Yes on everything except for thirty-six. No on thirty-six.
Okay. And Freeholder Siebel?
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill? Freeholder President Gill?
Yes.
So moved.
Freeholder President, this is Freeholder Cooper. I'm here.
Mr. President, for the record, Freeholder Cooper has joined the meeting.
Very good. Moving to resolutions eleven, twelve, and number thirty-six. Mr. Jackson?
And thirty-six we just took care of.
Oh, okay, so the number eleven and twelve.
Mr. President, again, County Engineer Vargis is here to address these items.
Again, Sanji Vargis, county engineer. Resolution number eleven is a federal grant to rehabilitate twelve intersections on Bloomfield Avenue in Montclair. This is a budget insertion. It's a federal grant. We took bids last week. We'll be coming back before the board for a contract approval. We are waiting for the DOT to approve the bids. Resolution number twelve is to purchase various special tires for your fleet division. It's from catalog. The three vendors submitted their bids with the lowest bids. And this is a not-to-exceed contract for seventy-five thousand dollars.
Parlevekio?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Has, I know there was quite a bit of work done with the township on this. Where, I have lost track. Where are we overall on this, on this project? So this is the revenue that's going to be to redo all eight intersections from the eastern gateway into town on Bloomfield Avenue, all the way, all the way west?
There are twelve intersections. There is two new traffic lights. So this is from all the way from Verona Line to Glenridge Line.
Does this include the Six Corners intersection?
All the intersections on Bloomfield Avenue from, yes.
Okay. And so we have an agreement with the township on, I know there was a lot of back and forth on the Six Corners, but we have an agreement on what we're actually doing there?
The whole plan was approved by the towns.
Okay. Freeholders, any additional questions or comments? Just, and just one final question. So the approval came in, how did the approval come from the township?
Even before the, I think the planning board or the council, and we had several meetings, and the final plans were submitted to them. And that was the end of it. I don't know whether there's a letter of communication. Everything was given to the town, and all the comments were addressed.
So the planning board, the planning board gave feedback?
We dealt with the planning board secretary there, and we even presented to the council once. We had a public hearing in the town hall.
Okay. So the mayor and the council have seen the the reason I'm, let me just get to the, cut to the chase. The reason I'm asking these questions, and I'll say this, you know, I say this respectfully, but, and maybe, I don't know if Mayor Jackson will agree or disagree, but sometimes communication within our township is a challenge, so I want to make sure that our elect, the question I'm asking is, did our, have our elected officials signed off on this plan for these intersections?
The then mayor of Montclair is on the line here, if you want to ask him directly.
I can't say that the communications got better since I left, Mr. President, that much I can assure you.
Because I can appreciate something happened at the planning board level, but whether that made it to our elected representatives in town is sometimes, you know, I don't know, so.
The public hearing that was held, Mr. President, was with the town council, and concepts were reviewed. We did make some, the county made some changes in consultation with the town, particularly around Gun Ridge Avenue where it gets to Bloomfield, at the five-quarter spot that you're mentioning too. And also, I believe some change where Seymour Street, that crossing there. But this was brought into by the governing body.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Jackson. I have no further questions. Freeholders? Okay. We'll have eleven and twelve moved by Freeholder Cooper and seconded by Freeholder Graham. Roll call, Madam Kirk.
Freeholder Cooper?
Yes.
Freeholder Graham?
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson?
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano?
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado?
Yes.
Freeholder Pumares?
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson?
Yes.
Freeholder Siebel? Freeholder Siebel? You need to unmute. Freeholder Siebel?
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill?
Yes.
So moved.
It keeps muting itself. I'm sorry.
Okay, Madam Kirk, the administration's withdrawn resolutions fourteen through seventeen. Let's move to resolution eighteen and nineteen. Could read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, I think we need to do number thirteen, though.
Well, thank you. Correct.
And for that item, Mr. President, Mr. Martinez is here to address this one.
Okay, thank you.
Jason?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Good evening, all, good evening, freeholders, Jason Martinez. So, so the, so we're requesting for the insertion of a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for three programs. It is the youth work readiness program. For this program, this will provide fifteen youths for about eight weeks of employment. And also, that includes the Project Lejon that will be setting up work sites for these youths. The second, the second proposal is for an agency to be identified for the family, community engagement. proposal is for an agency, um, to be identified for the family, community engagement. This, um, this pro, this program will, um, will, will engage with communities and families that are, um, that has, uh, their, their youth inside the juvenile justice system. And it basically would, uh, support parents and create, uh, connections within the community. And third, um, is the probation youth engagement program. These are for youths that are inside the, uh, that are in probation. And that they will be, um, and it's, they will, they will be going to, uh, enrichment trips, there's a youth support group and, um, they will be provided, uh, transportation to and from their house to, uh, to probation. And that's, uh, that, that includes, uh, the innovations, um, proposal. Any questions?
Mr. Paul Vecchio.
No questions for me.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Freeholders. Okay. Hearing and seeing none. Okay, Madam Clark, you guys missed Resolution thirteen. Do I have a, do I have a mover? On Resolution thirteen.
I'm happy to move, Mr. President.
Motion.
Okay. We got a move by Freeholder Pemera, second by Freeholder Cooper, roll call, Madam Clark.
Freeholder Seville.
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson.
Yes.
Freeholder Palmares.
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado.
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano.
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson.
Yes.
Freeholder Graham.
Yes.
Freeholder Cooper.
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, as noted, administration has drawn, withdrawn Resolutions fourteen through seventeen, let's move to Resolutions eighteen and nineteen, which are from the Division of Housing and Community Development, please read them into the record at a later time, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Mr. Cireo is here to address these two items.
Yeah, so this is George Cireo, Director of Housing and Community Development, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, George.
Okay, great. So the, uh, first Resolution, uh, eighteen is, uh, what amounts to a housekeeping issue. Uh, extension of three agreements, um, with Montclair, Livingston, and the DPW. Um, the agreements expired on August thirty-first. Um, projects have been completed, however, in order for the Division to pay out on the last vouchers for these projects, uh, we needed these contracts extended, so, uh, we get the checks reflect the proper contract period. Um, that's why we're bringing these back once again. Uh, but once, uh, once these are approved, we can pay out and, uh, these projects can be closed. Uh, the, uh, Resolution nineteen that we're presenting tonight is the, uh, CARES Act contracts for the three programs, ESG CV one, ESG CV two, and CDB GCV. Uh, these were all presented at the August meeting as a plan, uh, with the corresponding matrix. Uh, we submitted the plan to HUD, uh, and have been notified that that plan has been approved. HUD has issued the, uh, three contracts to the county for execution. And this would allow the, uh, the county to administer the programs identified in the matrix. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, Mr. Paul Vecchio.
No questions for me.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Freeholders, do you have any questions or comments?
I'd like to state something, uh, for Resolution number, um, eighteen, I'm really pleased because uh, what was done was a handicapped accessible entrance to the police department in Livingston, which was in tremendous, tremendous need by so many people. So I'm very thrilled that it's finally taken care of and the money is allotted for what was done, thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder Seville. Any other additional questions or comments? Okay. Uh, Freeholders, I have a motion from Freeholder Graham and a second from Freeholder Johnson for Resolution eighteen and nineteen, roll call, Madam Clark.
Freeholder Cooper.
Yes.
Freeholder Graham.
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson.
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano.
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado.
Yes.
Freeholder Palmares.
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson.
Yes.
Uh, Freeholder Seville.
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, moving to Resolution number twenty, could read it to the record at a later time, Mr. Jackson.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, Director Fishman is here to address this item.
Good evening, Mr. President and Freeholders, this is Eileen Fishman, I am the Director of, um, Division of, uh, Community Health Services for Essex County. This is a letter of intent for monies, uh, for our alcohol and addiction services programs. Uh, the money is used to fund providers that, um, are, uh, chosen through RFPs to provide various services for people with substance use disorder. As well as to provide money for, uh, people in recovery or recovery support services. Any questions?
Mr. Paul Vecchio.
No questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Freeholders.
Uh, Freeholder President, Freeholder Cooper, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Is this, is this just a letter of intent or are, where we actually awarded the money?
Right, this is a letter of intent.
Okay, so we're just applying and this is a letter of intent, thank you.
Sure.
Freeholders, additional questions or comments? I have a motion from Freeholder Johnson and a second from Freeholder Luciano, roll call, Madam Clark.
Okay, Freeholder Seville. Amute, please.
Yes, I'm trying, it's not working properly, I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you. Freeholder Vice President Richardson.
Yes.
Yes.
Excuse me, I thought she called me.
Freeholder, um, Palmares.
Freeholder Mercado and I get that confusion all the time, uh, the yes for me.
Freeholder Mercado.
Uh, yes.
Freeholder Luciano.
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson.
Yes.
Freeholder Graham.
Yes.
Freeholder Cooper.
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, moving to Resolution number twenty-one for the Department of Corrections, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Ortiz is here to address this item, Mr. President.
Good evening, uh, Alfaro Ortiz, Director, Essex County Correctional Facility here. I'm here to seek the approval and advocate for this contract award to the Schedule Soft Corporation to help us manage our six hundred and twenty sworn correction officers and supervisors, uh, their days, uh, shifts. It's a twenty-four-seven operation, so we need a program such as this to manage all of that to include some ancillary civilian staff members that are also scheduled to be at work as necessary, so I'd be to answer any question that may come my way.
Mr. Paul Vecchio.
No, no questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Freeholders. Uh, just question, how is the, so how is, how is the scheduling done now?
Right now, we use scheduling, Schedule Soft, but this is, uh, a new licensing for the next period of time, that we have to do that periodically, we have to up the license. And this also has some improvements on it that are definitely needed to manage and, you know, it's a big, large institution.
Okay, okay, so this is the current software provider, but this is like, just the next version?
Yes.
Okay. Any additional questions, Freeholders? Uh, I have a motion from, uh, Freeholder, uh, Pemeras and a second from Vice President, uh, Richardson, roll call, Madam Clark.
Freeholder Cooper.
Yes.
Freeholder Graham.
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson.
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano.
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado.
Yes.
Freeholder Palmares.
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson.
Yes.
Freeholder Seville.
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, let's move to Resolution number twenty-two, which is from the Office of the Prosecutor, Mr. Jackson.
Uh, sorry again, Mr. President, yeah, this is from the Office of the Prosecutor, this is simply a two-year extension of a contract uh, with, uh, for criminal, uh, investigation supplies and equipment with Tri-Tech Forensics Incorporated, again, a two-year extension not to exceed, uh, fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, Mr. Paul Vecchio.
No questions for me.
Mr. McInerney.
Sorry, Mr. President, I have no questions.
Thank you. Uh, Freeholders, any questions or comments? Okay, um, I have mover, I have a mover in Freeholder Luciano and a second by Freeholder Pemeras, roll call, Madam Clark.
Freeholder Seville.
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson.
Yes.
Freeholder Palmares.
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado.
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano.
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson.
Yes.
Freeholder Graham.
Yes.
Freeholder Cooper.
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill.
Yes.
So moved. Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to take this opportunity to, um, uh, share some information for our final, uh, public comment to give people the opportunity to call in to get into the queue, so when you get to that section, they'll be ready. I'd like to do that at this time, with your permission.
Yep, sure.
Okay. If you're calling in, um, for the second public comment session, it is for non-agenda items only. You will be given a fifteen-minute window of time to call in to get into the queue, which, which begins now. The number is eight, five, five, seven, five, six, seven, five, two, zero, and use the password or passcode six, seven, two, seven, eight. I will repeat. The call-in number is eight, five, five, seven, five, six, seven, five, two, zero, and the passcode is six, seven, two, seven, eight. You will be acknowledged to speak in the order that you, your call was received. Emails received for the public comment, a non-agenda items will be read after the calls are completed. So, um, this call-in time is beginning now, you, you will have three minutes to speak. Mr. President, we can now continue with, with the agenda.
Okay. Um, moving to, uh, Resolutions twenty, twenty-two through thirty-three and number thirty-five. Um, I'm gonna recommend that Resolution twenty-three be done by acclamation. Additional questions or comments? Okay. Hearing or seeing none, I have a motion from Freeholder Vice President Richardson and a second from Freeholder Seville to take Resolutions twenty-three through thirty-three and thirty-five as one, roll call, Madam Clark.
Freeholder Cooper.
Yes.
Freeholder Graham.
Yes.
Freeholder Johnson.
Yes.
Freeholder Luciano.
Yes.
Freeholder Mercado.
Yes.
Freeholder Palmares.
Yes.
Freeholder Vice President Richardson.
Yes.
Freeholder Seville.
Yes.
Freeholder President Gill.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, moving to report of board committees. Legislative reports, written communication, unfinished business, new business. Okay, Madam Clark, let's move to public comment session on non-agenda items. Again, since we're meeting remotely, the public have the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration, and they also have the opportunity to call in. Madam Clark.
Just to restate again the instructions, you will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. And emails that were received for public comment will be read after all the calls are completed. So at this time, our Public Information Officer, um, Charlo Malumba will announce the callers so they can state their comment or question and be reminded that you will have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. So at this time, we are accepting only calls to pertaining to non-agenda items, uh, please. So at this point, uh, I'm gonna ask the Public Information Officer if we have any calls in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, we do not have any callers in the queue at this time.
All right, Mr. President, then I will read, um, the emails that we received for non-agenda items for public comment. The first, uh, email we have is from Carol Gross. No address given. Hello, my name is Carol Gross. I'm calling to express my outrage that Essex County continues to contract with ICE. Attorneys, advocates, and even DHS itself have documented over and over the spoiled food. The physical and verbal abuse, the delays and denials of healthcare, and the inappropriate medical treatment of people in ICE detention in Essex County. The abuse and cruelty that has gone on inside the US immigration system is a project, product of an intentionally brutal racist system. On Monday, at a virtual forum convened by members of the Congressional Committee on Homeland Security, Bonnie Watson Coleman called out Essex County as an example of the impending conditions that are endemic within the system. Another speaker, Laura Rivera, of the Southern Poverty Law, called for all these ICE jails to be shut down now. She also issued a formal statement in conjunction with the event explaining the purpose of ICE detention. In that statement, she said, "This system subjugates mostly black, brown, and indigenous people to maintain white supremacy in this county. It uses shame and stigma of incarceration to justify its own cruelty, suggesting if those people are in jail, they must have done something to deserve it. While we applaud Essex County establishment of an oversight task force, we don't need any more investigations of this system. The abuse and cruelty that's going on inside the US immigration system and prisons and jails, including your own, is not an aberration. It is the intention. We want you to do your part to end detention and cancel your contract with ICE immediately. The question now is, will you have the courage to do your part and exercise your power to abolish this system and terminate your contract with ICE? You need to find another way to run Essex County that doesn't rely on incarcerating people for money. I look forward to your response." The same comments and questions were submitted by- The same comments and questions were submitted by Alex Zucker, Sarah Melendez, and Jessica Ho. Mr. President, that includes the written comments we received. I will all ask, uh, one more time before I close public comments on your behalf, um, to, to our, uh, Public Information Officer, uh, do we have any calls in the queue?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do not have any callers in the queue waiting to speak.
So that concludes our, our public. One moment, uh, Mr. President, I'm getting a note.
Fifteen minutes is, uh, what it's called.
Okay. Um, uh, Mr. President, um, fifteen minutes is at five forty-five. So, um, this process being new to us and, um, so that, um, we will keep the line open and I, I will be notified if a caller comes in and I will notify you, Mr. President, and, and we'll make a determination at that time. I'm turning the meeting over to you.
So are we moving on to other agenda items? I'm, I'm confused what we're doing here.
Um, we're going right back to, um, the agenda as, as, as you have it.
The agenda's over. And so we have Freeholder Comment Session. Any Freeholder comments? Okay, so we're done. So what, what are we doing now?
We will end the meeting.
If the meeting's over, the meeting's over.
The meeting's over.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion.
Thank you.